Go ahead and get started.
Yes.
Start our pledge and then we'll be married by Commissioner Patton, please. Pledge of allegiance.
To the black of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My gracious, loving heavenly Father, we come before you tonight thanking you that everything is well with us as it is. We ask your blessings upon us tonight as we enter into this meeting, that we will do so with an open mind and discuss the things that would be beneficial to the residents and citizens of Beaver Dam and make those decisions accordingly. Go with us not just tonight, but on through life. Protect us wherever we might go. In Christ's name, amen.
Amen. Welcome everybody out tonight. Appreciate everybody coming out tonight. Go ahead and get started. Our first item of business is approval of minutes.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion in second and further discussion. Those in favor, say five aye. Post same. Approval of special call meeting minutes.
Move to approve the minutes of special call minute meetings.
Second. We have a motion in second and further discussion. Those in favor, say five aye. Post same. Motion passes. Next item is payment of the bills.
Make a motion to pay the bills.
Second.
Have a motion in second and further discussion. Those in favor, signify with aye. Post same. Motion passes. Next item is the second reading of the ordinance 2024-11-8-4, which is the one on the cannabis dispensary moving it from 1,000 feet to 400 feet from a park. We've had our first reading, we just need our second reading to approve that amendment.
Move to approve the second reading of that amendment.
Second.
We have a motion in second and further discussion. Those in favor, say five aye. Post same. Motion passes. Joe and Brendan Newcomb sewer tap is the next item. I'm sorry.
Joe and Brendan Newcomb sewer tap.
Is that something you want to?
Did Amy put that on there?
It's on here.
It's on here.
Best I understand is they're going to tap onto the force main on 231 South, and when the force main was put in there, they was given a free tap. I don't really know why she.
I think it just needs to be approved.
Okay. I guess it just needs to be reapproved.
It was first brought in.
Reapproved?
Yeah.
Yeah, because that would have been 20.
It's been awhile.
At least 10.
Oh yeah, it'd been back 20, probably two or three.
24 is when that list actually came in.
2014.
I knew this before.
2014 on the minute date.
It was 24.
Yeah, but it had to be before Bluegrass Crossings.
Well, we thought instead of 14.
Now, they may have done that something different, but when it was first put in.
Oh, it was first put in, yeah. Because Joe and Brendan approved in 14.
They're just going to tap into it? They're not getting the free tap, do they have to pay for it?
No.
That was offered when they crossed their property.
Okay.
When they came across, it was part of the deal with everybody out there was given a free tap, my understanding.
So, do we just need to make a motion to proceed with that?
Yeah, let's do that. That way we'll have it, more updates.
Make a motion to say this sewer tap.
Second.
We have a motion in second and further discussion. Those in favor, say five aye.
Aye.
Post same. Motion passes. KLC liability grant application.
We don't have what they're offering yet. I guess that's more forcing into fitting one of them, but just to.
Go ahead and approve to apply for it. We apply for these every year, so.
Make a motion we apply for the KLC liability grant?
Second.
We have a motion in second, is there any further discussion? Those in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Post same. Motion passes. We're going to skip over the next one for just a few minutes and go to item number five, position to hire. Is this the one I called about?
Yeah.
Okay. I've been talking with them at Grad, and I'd like to get y'all's blessing before I go any further. They have a new program out where we can hire possibly up to two employees for a six month period, full-time position, and they pay all wages on it for six months. And we were looking about getting at least one to help with Shelby and kind of Annalisa a little bit too on tourism and park, and maybe look around and see possibly needing another one to help with various things in the city, if everybody's okay with that.
Absolutely.
Free help's always welcome.
They're paying for it, but I'd just like to let you all know what we're looking at and make sure everybody's on board with it. So, we're good to go?
Free help's always welcome.
Good deal. Okay, next item is the 2024 police statistics.
Over there, I don't know. Kind of fill a bit of the highlights, if you look on the first page, that's February 8th. You see the street citations were from 45 to 149.
Cracked down on that, didn't you?
Two new guys.
Oh.
Jacob and Noah, so if you look at right below that, calls to dispatch, it was up in 24, 33, 54, 3,354. That's up, 22, 23 was up a little bit, not much, and then 24 been up. Citeations went from 275 to 293. Alcohol-related, calling him, had his sedition figure. Thank Sergeant Hunter, he's helped a lot with this, and we've come up with 34%. And that is going through dispatch on these citations, so it figures up to about 34%. And probably, I think maybe KLC or something.
For the state, for the alcohol-related fee, which puts us in good shape. But I do want to add real quick on that, that's not necessarily meaning 34% of DUIs. This is anything, this could be a domestic or anything where there was alcohol present.
The DUIs were 23, 23, there's 15, 24, there's 30. Our accidents, glad we reported that this year, or in 24, there was about, there was 182 accidents, with injuries, without injuries, and that's down from 207 in 2023. So, accidents went down, maybe could be due to maybe some of the citations for feeding, but at any rate, they are down. We only had one fatality that was south out in front of, right before he did the vertical run, there was the young man that lost his life in a rain, a Hispanic person. Just give you a little idea about when the wrecked they were, Tommy and I, you know, they were 60, 71, I guess, on day shift, so, you know, a lot of them on day shift that we were. And then if you, the cases, they were up a little bit, 61 to 78. And then this just gives you a little bit of the next page for different citations. You know, seatbelts, things like that. And if you see in the red, it says once served in 24 was 55. Last year, that's down a little bit this year. Last year it was 66 that was served. And you can look there, on the bottom of that, that's the drug-related, possession of meth was 11, possession of marijuana was 10, traffic in marijuana was 1. So, it was about the same number per year, both is what this was. But it gives you DUIs, 93 DUI drugs, so that would make it 21, you're looking at 22. And then if you did turn over to 2024, you heard the narcotics effect impacting our state and communities. I just thought that would be nice to be put in there where you all can see it, deals with the heroin, opioids, amphetamine, cocaine, fentanyl, and that is something that's coming into our city, not seeing a lot over here. Jeremy got one lady, a couple months ago maybe, with fentanyl. But we are seeing some of that, and then the marijuana. Let's just a little bit in there for you to look at on the back of those last two pages. If y'all got any questions about any number or anything in here, just get with me and let me know. So, we tried to do it a little different this year. Again, thanks to Jeremy for helping put this together.
Looks very nice.
We worked on it for four days. If y'all got any questions, just ask them. We'll try to think of one.
Appreciate your efforts on that, Ma, very much. Okay, next item, I'll start down. James, you hear anything?
No, not right now.
Sandy?
Well, I ran into someone the other day, and they were like, "I hear you're trying to spearhead a skate park." Has anybody heard from Grad?
I'm supposed to be getting a meeting with Joanne to, she's going to try and, I don't think I'm meeting with her, with her department, with the person that's going to try and get a grant for us.
That's awesome. I apologize.
We're trying to find a grant, that's all we're trying to do right now.
For not getting ahold of you before then, I just, it's kind of shocked me, I was in a place of business, and someone just came up to me and said that, and I was like, "Where did you hear that?"
A lot of people, you know, a lot of people were out there.
Yeah, this was a kid that was like, "Oh, please, please." And I drove by the one in Owensboro, and it was a cool day, and there were several out there of all ages, all ages, yeah.
I don't know where we're going to put it yet, but it'll, there's a lot of interest in it. I don't say a lot, there's interest in it.
And then the status on the buildings at Oldham?
I have to find that company that will come and test it for us.
That's right. I remember you telling me that. I just drove by there, went to my storage building the other day and drove by there, so I always think of it.
I've got a hold of them, and they gave me a few names to check with.
Good deal. Thank you.
That's been a bad situation there, hasn't it Travis? Is it down over there? They make it check, have it tested?
Nope. No, I don't think so, not at this time.
Charles?
No, David might get a good control of their stuff, so I don't have anything.
I'm good. Like I said, I talked to Joanne, she's trying to hook me up with somebody to get me, try and write a grant, try and get something, but she's not sure which one we're going to get yet.
Okay.
Appreciate it, Kevin.
Travis?
I don't hear anything.
Give an update on what we're doing up?
He's left never a different Larry. There you go with that.
Been to the quarter. We're doing some light repairs on this river, gravel line, throwing cable to the law.
Sold that one today.
Hope to have it wrapped up Wednesday afternoon.
Did you get it all dug out?
They got two of the manholes dug out around them, which is all that they have to do, so.
Oh, so they're not going to dig the whole thing out?
No.
Okay.
Well, I thought they were going to have to dig the whole line all the way through.
They're going to have to do a section there, but not both.
Okay, yeah.
Flip out in the rest.
Yes.
Okay. Jill, give me it. Mike?
I have a white, you know, white fix, he has done his homework online, and it'll be going to pass the bill Sunday, starting 16.
Good. Terry, give me it.
I didn't.
Raleigh?
I asked Jill for this, and she did ask permission, and I was granted permission to have it, which, I mean, I don't know why, I wouldn't be able to anyway. But anyway, just wanted to talk about this in a minute. All right, so what we have here is a water bill from one of my tenants. And if you look at this water bill, history, you know, the last time he had a zero balance was on August 22nd. Since that time, including January, that I wrote down here at the bottom, he's had his water turned off four times. He's been allowed to have his water turned back on, except the last time in January, but he was allowed to have his water turned back on every time by paying a reconnect fee and a minimum, while at the same time accumulating no more than a larger bill. You know, as you can see down here at the bottom, he was, that I wrote in here, the final bill figured out to be $517.44. Now, I was lucky on this one, I had a church step up and pay this bill, and he's way behind on rent too, paying a month's rent, I mean, I'm still a victim, but anyway, at least I don't have to pay the water bill now. And, you know, so therefore, I'm not here arguing the cost of the bill, I'm sitting here arguing the process. I mean, I don't understand why it takes five months to finally realize that somebody's not going to pay the bill, they're not going to get caught up. I mean, like I said, every time he paid his bill, he paid the reconnect fee, minimum of what he had to pay to turn it on, while at the same time accumulating a larger and larger bill. You know, you guys pass it on, it's two years ago, saying that tenants didn't pay the bill, the landlord was responsible for it, and I get that. But nowhere in that ordinance does it say that we're not allow a tenant to repeatedly get it turned off, repeatedly get it turned back on with paying the minimum, while accumulating a larger and larger bill that eventually is just going to be left up to the landlord. So, what I'm asking you guys to do is put something into place where this don't happen, this shouldn't happen. It shouldn't happen.
So, they only have to pay a minimum to have it turned back on? I thought they had to pay the complete bill to get it turned back on. Is that the way it works Travis?
To pay that we're doing that.
We try to work with people, help them to have water, but if they're willing to set up on payments, well, we usually leave it on. I wasn't aware this went on for five months. But yeah, that's something we would do better on if that's what we did.
Were you aware of it, or just when, when did you become aware of it, I guess?
I guess about, I guess the first time I was, it was probably in December, I guess.
But with that being said, a bunch of times if the customer gets behind, as long as they'll make a weekly payment, we'll try to work with them and keep them on.
Do we have several like that, Jill?
Sometimes, well, we turn them off. I mean, I'm trying to remember, because I've earned, but it seemed to me like, wasn't the landlord going to be notified? Was that just a discussion?
That was only when they moved out though, wasn't it? That they were responsible for the water bill?
That that's when they'd be notified?
When they moved out, the landlord was responsible for the rest of the bill.
But I was thinking that the landlord was.
It was supposed to be notified.
Earlier then.
No, that was, I don't think that was in a discussion that I can remember. It may have should have been, but I don't remember being able to.
I mean, it was brought up, it may have been just somebody sitting in the crowd.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, it seemed like there was some kind of discussion.
So, we don't notify the landlord when their water gets cut off?
I think that's what the discussion was, if I remember right, we all had put that in the ordinance, the discussion was if the water was turned off.
Should we do that?
With the bill that you were going to notify the landlord, but I don't think that was part of the motion.
I don't think that was written in the motion.
It was a discussion about maybe it'd be a good idea to.
And maybe that's what I remember, is just the discussion of it.
That's easy to change. I do know, it's a little more difficult on, we run into issues, and I don't know how to.
It's a tough situation.
Properly say this, because water's a basic need, and we run into issues where you can't just shut somebody off if they're trying to do something.
Yeah, it's a tough situation, because we're trying to work with people and help them, but then if they were to move out, it would be done done, whoever, and I understand that.
Now, is there a way we could see, is there any way I could look up my tenant and see if they got back new water bills or anything like that, or not?
Is it possible we could duplicate the bill and send them a copy of every, one of their tenants?
AV, can we give that information?
Since it's their, they own the place, they're renting the place to these people.
As long as it's in their renters' contract, I don't know why that would be.
Are you talking about doing that every month? You just do it when you.
When they run bills, they can run a duplicate bill.
I don't know, that would get.
That would get monotonous.
Very cumbersome.
Okay.
Because of the.
But when they don't pay their bill, I think you should be notified.
It could be set up that if there is a disconnect, then landlords contacted the disconnect.
I mean, the duplication means you'd be mailed out, there'd be a double cost to it, and I guess the real question is whether or not, is there a mechanism that he could check? Are you actually requesting that somehow you be notified of the delinquency and the increased delinquency?
Well, I mean, it's just like this here, I mean, it's just counted up and up and up over five more timeframe, and has water cut off four times, I mean, I just don't think it should get to that point. I mean, I think it should two, three times, pay your whole bill, you don't even have a hold.
Well, especially if you're not aware of it, and like you say, they stick you with a $517 bill.
Jill, do we know the renters that get cut off who their landlords are?
For the most part, yes.
Yeah, because we'd have to have a copy of the lease.
It would be a problem to notify them, yeah.
I know we ran into a little bit of trouble. My fix on it was, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, the first, shut off and turn on is a $50 reconnect.
Second time's a.
Second time's a hundred. Then I wanted to go to 250 and 500 and 1,000, and our KLC quit, shut that down real quick. Says you can't do that. That was just getting to the point where they couldn't turn their water back on, and then they'll have to.
That ordinance, does it state that if he wasn't having a rent dump in with the bill, that the reconnect fees would come off of that or not?
Say that again?
If Terry wasn't, if they was dumping with that bill, which I understand your side, I'm not arguing, but say he got dumped with a $500 bill from this deal, does our ordinance state that he's responsible for the three, for the five reconnect fees too, or should that come off of it?
No, it doesn't say that.
Okay.
I don't think it said anything about reconnect.
Because that could be, that could be $500 right there by itself.
But it shouldn't be five if the guy didn't pay them.
How was he notified this time?
He wasn't notified until the guy moved, guy.
Oh, no, I knew he, I seen him up there turning it off, and then, and then I also knew that he was behind with me, so I was like, well, he ain't paying his bill either.
So, did you come down and check and find out that's how far he was behind?
Yeah.
Well, I'm not, I'm not suggesting you do it every month. In other words, it's duplicated to the landlord, but what about considering the landlord is notified if the fees accumulate over the same 90 days? Or 60 days, whatever.
I really thought there was something in that ordinance about a timeframe.
Well, the bad part is, Terry's held responsible for that if it's not paid. He should be notified when it's not paid.
Well, I think a simple fix is to notify the property owner anytime there's a shut-off.
Anytime there's a shut-off.
Yeah.
And that way you know, and then by, so long, you can come down here and say, "Okay, they shut it off, did he reconnect it?" Because if he hadn't, you know, I don't want to be held responsible for this.
I mean, it's just like, you know, if somebody was moving out, and I was going to give them their deposit back, and I did, a little did I know the day they paid the water, two months. Well, I didn't give them their whole deposit back.
Correct.
I didn't know about it, or anybody else.
But if you're notified it's time to shut off, you obviously know something, there's a problem.
You'll know, you may not know when they're actually leaving, but you'll know throughout the process, throughout their time there.
Do you think that would solve the problem, Terry, if we made, if it's cut off, you're notified that it's been cut off?
It would definitely help, absolutely.
Jill, that's possible for you to do?
How many instances do you feel like that is?
There's a lot of people get their water cut off every month, isn't it?
Because I know.
15, 20 per month.
A lady that I work with a lot, I always tell her, "Don't let it get that far, make us aware of."
He said 15 to 20 a month, or, that's not a lot, really. All you're doing in that situation is, you're not, you have to know the landlord, obviously, but the landlord's notified that there's a cutoff.
Yeah.
And then, in fairness to this gentleman, he's, he and anybody in his situation has to assume when they get that notification that there's a problem, and if it gets hooked up and it cut off again, then the charges are going to never be greater. So, I think it, no more than that, I was afraid it's more than 10 to 15, but.
Well, I think that protects you, because like you say, they pay a deposit, you know, that you're supposed to get refunded, but that protects you at the end, "Well, hey, did you pay your water bill?" Nah.
They pay deposit dues too.
Well, that's, what if we just didn't let anybody get over their deposits on their charges?
Then I know his deposit would come off of this total price.
And if he's behind on rent, then you're not giving his deposit back to him anyways, but then you're still stuck with this.
But you're still out.
Because if he's paying.
You'd be surprised at how many people pay that hundred bucks a year, every, what, four, five times a year, same people.
Do we need to make that a motion?
It just blows my mind.
Now, if I, I bought some properties up here, I look and see if they own, or is that, I can't, or I have to ask them if I can look and see if they own this bill.
As far as I'm concerned, you can come down here and talk to them, get it, your property.
Yeah, that's all I'm, because I just bought them, I mean, I just know how they feel.
It's the landlord's meter too, is it not? It's the landlord's meter too, is it not? When they have that meter put in?
Well, no, that, he's also responsible for the bill if they don't pay it.
So, yeah, he has the right to know.
Yeah, that's all I was asking, if I can look, because I'm sure.
One of yours I think is probably okay, surprisingly enough.
Do we need to make that a motion and amend that?
I think so.
Do we need to look at the ordinance first and see how it reads?
I just think we need to make a motion to amend.
We still go ahead and we can do the.
Make a motion to amend.
You have to have a second reading anyway.
So, I make a motion, we amend the, what would be, the landlord's responsibility for the water debt?
To have the right to.
No, that's already in there, but I think what, the only thing I think we need to do is make the motion that if someone's turned off, the landlord is contacted.
The landlord's notified.
That's totally fine.
Make that motion, yeah.
Because everything else pretty much is covered.
Yeah, I was trying to say that, but I wasn't getting it outright, that's for sure.
So, we have a motion in second and further discussion. Those in favor, signify with aye. Post same. Motion passes.
Travis, the notification has to be in writing.
Yeah.
Yeah, auras, only subject.
Right.
Yep. Because it's a. He said, she said.
So, we would have to send out something in writing?
Letter or email, I guess.
Email, probably the easiest.
Okay.
Well, you can start out the phone call and say, "Hey, Terry, we got this, I need to send it to you in writing," what your email address is.
I think it saved you guys, I really do.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
What's your name?
Travis. The stuff is done in mail.
Coke Holland.
Just do a form.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, do a form, make multiple copies of it, and stick it in the letter.
Oh.
Anything else, Terry?
No, I mean, and I appreciate it, I mean, I just, the process is what I was.
I'm like, you know, I thought we had something in place already.
And I think that it was never our intent that we were going to be stuck with a bill that, you know.
Well, but. Like I said, I was saying it just.
We may, I think that was our intent, I think there was something in there, but it may not have been anything about being contacted when the shut-off.
That might be.
And that's, that's an easy fix.
Yeah, it is. And again, like I said, I think it saves them, because then they can, they can hold that deposit saying, "Look, I'll make sure that you've paid your water bill before I give you your deposit back."
Okay. Jim?
Yeah, I have one question for you. So, you know, I purchased this property on Third Street, and this property on Fourth Street, and I knew when I purchased the property, I did not realize there was a lien on, is it Third Street? Okay, so Third Street had a lien. Now, I don't know if you've been by there, I took a dump trailer and we cleaned that hole outside of that property up. Now, granted, I have not, because I'm going to redo the property, I have not redone the outside, I'm not going to piece it together. When I redo it, I'll take it down to the studs and redo the whole property.[1739.12]
it together. When I redo it, I'll take it down to the studs and redo the whole property. But I cleaned all the trash up, and I got my dump truck on Fourth Street doing the same thing. They're cleaning it up. It should be the front size tomorrow, the back probably end of the week. But I want to know about getting those lien, that lien released.
That lien.
Because I didn't own it when it was put on, but now that I have purchased the property, Third Street's cleaned up. And I got to say, they, I mean, they was mad at me at first, but they're, they've really done good since. I mean, he ain't accumulating no more junk. And, I mean, whether it holds, I don't know. But for now, he's done very good, so.
We've already discussed that a little bit, and we've got to discuss it here in a closed session a little bit.
Okay.
Because it is a lien and some litigation, but I feel pretty safe. That won't be a problem.
Yeah, that's all I was wondering, what I need to do, because I would say, I don't want to, I don't want to go in there and piece the outside, because when I, when I go redo it, I'm going to redo it all. And that's what I was making sure. I didn't want to, I didn't know if there was something else I had to do to get that off. That's all I was.
I think we'll be addressing that a little later tonight.
Okay, perfect.
Welcome to Beaver.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, I entertain the motion to go into closed session to discuss property acquisition and litigation.
What is that? That resolution for, for, for facial tax?